Okay, all rise. We'll start off the prayer and the pledge.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not to temptation, but to deliver us from evil. For thy is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever and ever. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, next item on the agenda, appointment to the vacant council seat. Does that come from you, Mr. Mayor?
Actually, it comes from council first. I think we all have seen the letter, or maybe not, from the Democratic Party saying they're not going to put anybody in. I think the way the charter reads, council then decides.
Correct.
Right? So I need, I think you need a council nomination, I believe.
A nomination from a member of council to fill the vacant seat. I'm looking for a nomination.
Who's it going to be?
I nominate John Ross Durham.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Jesse?
Yes.
Lauren?
Yes.
Dan?
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Okay, that's four. That's all we need, isn't it, Mayor?
That's all I think we need, yep.
Okay, Mr. John Ross Durham, do you want to come forward, please?
Yes, please. Where do you want me?
Right up here in front.
I swear at you first. Before, before we begin, I want to make sure you know what you're doing. Well, you just heard Councilman Conover, that's sworn in, so you understand the goal. But understand the second piece of that is, you're now in the public eye. It's like, as soon as you go to your front door, we all know it, we're in the public eye. If you got pulled over five minutes ago for a DUI, that's a back page thing. You swear into this, five minutes ago you pull over for DUI, it's a front page, top of the, it's going to be on the top part of the paper. I'd imagine.
Above the fold.
Top of the fold.
You're going above the fold.
Right? So, just realize you're in public, wherever you go, text messages, Facebook posts, et cetera, you're in public display. So, do you need that? You ready? I state your name.
I, John Ross Durham.
Do you sound and you swear?
Do sound and I swear.
Do I support the Constitution of the United States?
I support the Constitution of the United States.
And the state of Ohio?
And the state of Ohio.
And the charter and ordinances?
And charter and ordinances.
Of the city of Napoleon, Ohio?
Of Napoleon, Ohio.
And the laws of the state of Ohio?
The laws of the state of Ohio.
And faithfully and impartially discharge?
Faithfully and impartially discharge.
And perform all duties?
And perform all duties.
Coming upon me?
Coming upon me.
As a council member of the city of Napoleon, Ohio?
As a council member of the city of Napoleon, Ohio.
To which I've been appointed?
To which I've been appointed.
According to best of my ability and understanding.
According to the best of my ability and understanding.
Well, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right. Council President, where is his seat?
And I believe he gets to sit right over there beside the wonderful law director. Welcome, John.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes from the previous meeting from October 21st. In the absence of any objections or corrections, the minutes shall stand approved. And John, your wife is, I'm assuming that's your wife back there?
It is.
She is welcome to stay for the whole meeting if she desires.
Did she get any good pictures? Did you want any good pictures?
I got pictures.
Do you want, we can share? Do you want, you're good?
I'll send them over to you.
Okay.
Okay. So... Mr. Com- Joe, do you have a comment?
Yeah, first of all, I wanted to congratulate and welcome Ross Durham, and related to, if he has anything he'd like to say and kind of introduce himself to, to council and everyone else.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, Joe. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. I'm honored to be here. It's a humbling experience going through all this. So, people have asked me, why do I want to be a member of city council? To me, it's simply a matter of public service. I'm proud to live in Napoleon and want to give something back to the city. My wife and I moved here in August of 2017 from where I grew up in Conway, Arkansas. We moved here with our two daughters at the time, Kinsley and Reese. Once we landed, we had our third daughter, Blake. So Jess is from Napoleon. Whenever we had the idea of moving, it was kind of a no-brainer on where we wanted to land. So, growing up, my parents always said whenever I would go out, be a leader and make us proud. So, that's kind of the standard and which I've tried to live by on a daily basis. Those values have translated and made me really who the man I am today. I would say that whenever we came to Napoleon, I've lived in a lot of different places. Coming to Napoleon, I was able to really see the sense of community and feel the pride in where you live for the first time in my life. So, I want to give back with that being said. So, very excited. I'm eager to learn. I'm willing to listen to, to all of the citizens. And as my parents said, I want to be a leader and I want to make all you guys proud. So, thank you again.
And definitely welcome. Any other comments? I do think this is a nice mixture on this council. We have some, some natives of Napoleon, like Jeffrey and Jeffrey over here. And we have some that, like yourself, that's came into the community. So I think we have a nice mixture of people and I think you'll do well here.
Thank you.
Okay. Joe, anything else?
No, there.
Okay. Thank you. Citizens' communication. Is there anyone out there that has anything to bring up before council that's not already on the agenda? Okay. Seeing none, what I'd like to do at this time is move the agenda.
We did.
We did.
Did we?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Did we? Can we put a minute? She says yes, okay. I'd like to move the agenda and move item L3, Investment Update, from Eileen, to, at this point in time. So if you want to come up to the podium.
Thank you and good evening. Always a pleasure to come to Napoleon, Ohio, like a new councilperson. Very proud to be part of your community and help the community maximize at least their interest income as it relates to, to my function in working with the finance director. So you have in front of you here an update. This is a typical presentation that I've made in the past to finance committee and periodically do address and share with the finance director as well. So we start out with a little economic update to just set the stage insofar as what has occurred over the past year and then a summary of the city's investment portfolio. So when we look at page two, we know that the Federal Reserve has been a big player in the markets in, as they drive the short-term interest rates. They last met last month. At that point, they did lower that overnight Fed funds target. We're now in a range of one and a half to, to one and three-quarters percent. This contrasts very much so from the story that we experienced a year ago where the Fed was in the path of increasing interest rates and the outlook was for additional interest rates into 2019. Market sentiment shifted very quickly in the fourth quarter of 2018 and the Fed then reacted by starting with their first rate cut in June of this year, followed up with another one and then a third one here in July, or in October. Going forward, the Fed has indicated at this stage that they will be looking to assessing the current economic conditions before making any additional changes in interest rate policy. So this is a change also from the sentiment that they communicated earlier this year when they were clearly acting to sustain the expansion versus now on hold, we would say. Insofar as what conditions would warrant them to shift gears and start increasing rates, they've made it very clear that if they were to see inflation move much higher than what it currently is in a sustained fashion, that that would be a trigger for them to shift course. We do not foresee that happening at this stage. When we look at page three, this gives us an indication of what the market's expectations are for this overnight interest rate. Looking at a little longer-term view here, this is the Fed Funds Futures Market, which gives us an idea of the market's expectations for changes in the overnight Fed Funds Rate. As we can see, looking at June of 2020 and December of 2020, the market is clearly pricing in and expecting that the Fed will have to at least drop interest rates at least one more time in 2020. And of course, as we know, that will have implications on investment portfolios and on interest income as well as rates fall. Page four, tariffs certainly have been a big factor in this market environment as the market has reacted, very much so, to positive news as it relates to potentials for resolution of the trade disputes and then has reacted negatively when progress has not been made. One of the factors that we know is of kind of importance to most of us here in northeast Ohio has to do with the agricultural side, the soybean side particularly, when of course, as we know, China, due to tariffs, had reduced their purchases of soybeans. And we can see this in the chart in August of 2018. But then they quickly came to realize that, you know, they have to buy their soybeans from the US. So consequently, we have seen them come back into our markets and purchase soybeans. So irrespective of the tariffs, China has been forced to continue to purchase many of our goods and services. And overall, the tariffs have had a more negative impact on China as opposed to the US at this stage. China has seen their, their growth basically cut in half from where it has been over the past decade. Their growth is still high, but considering the size of their country, it still is a big hit. Versus when we look at the US GDP growth, which last was released for the third quarter of 2019, it came in at 1.9%. So still a positive number. The consumer is clearly still holding up the US economy at this stage. Turning to page five, looking at US growth, a little more detail here. Kind of two factors of the US economy. The manufacturing sector, which although it doesn't necessarily contribute as much to the US economy as it has in the past, we certainly can see in looking at the indexes that the manufacturing indexes have dropped below the 50 level. This is a diffusion index, so meaning if it's above 50, that's positive. It means expansion below 50 is, that things are softening. So certainly, manufacturing has softened and that, of course, has a domino effect on the US economy. But when we look at the non-manufacturing index, which is services, we can see that that as well has trended down, although it is still in the positive area at this stage. Moving on just to page six. One of the factors that clearly is impacting our markets are the interest rates abroad. So when we look at the level of interest rates in our US markets compared to other developed countries, and particularly when we look at the safe haven countries, which would be Japan and Germany, we can see that those countries' government bonds are offering negative interest rates, which is a strange phenomenon. But it's a factor of the sense of their economies and what their central banks are doing to try to stimulate their economies as well. And we compare that to our US interest rates, which are clearly much higher. So this creates an environment where global investors who have the opportunity to invest in any markets are investing in the US market. We remain a safe haven within the world from an investment standpoint as we have a, you know, a clearly defined financial system as well as rule of law, which comes into play. Interest rates certainly have moved a lot. When we look at page seven, this gives us a perspective of how interest rates have changed over the past year. So the gray line is October of 2018. The orange line is July of 2019. And the blue line, October of 2019. And we can see, one year ago, short-term interest rates were lower relative to longer-term interest rates. And the interest rate curve then, in essence, inverted. So meaning that at least within our five-year maximum maturity that we can operate in, the rates, five-year rates were lower than the overnight rates, even though the Fed had started to cut rates. And then when we fast forward to where we are here today, curve is relatively flat as the Fed has lowered that short-term interest rate and longer-term interest rates also had dropped as well. The Fed has indicated that they would like to try to get the curve back into a normal shape. When we say "normal," that means short-term interest rates are lower than longer-term interest rates. But this global phenomenon is serving as a factor to keep those longer-term interest rates down as well. We do not see that lifting anytime soon at this stage. So how has, how has this impacted the city's investment portfolio? If we flip to page nine, we have there the summary of the city's investment portfolio as of the end of October. And as we can see, total portfolio was $21,130,809. Asset allocation, we were diversified with funds invested in US government agencies, FDIC insured CDs and US Treasury securities as well. Weighted average maturity is 2.29 years. We extended the portfolio to the extent that we were able to from where we were a year ago. A year ago, we were just under two years. And again, if we recall, a year ago, we were in an environment where interest rates were poised to continue to increase. So we quickly, to the extent we could, shifted strategy and looked, looked to extend the portfolio with the objective of locking in interest rates. So that has resulted in the current yield on the portfolio now stands at 1.97%, which is an improvement over a year ago when it stood at 1.74%. The key to the strategy is the maturity distribution as we look to position the investment portfolio. So as we can see here, looking at the maturity distribution, we've kind of put the portfolio in buckets, we would refer to. We can see that right now, we have 22% of the portfolio maturing out in that four and five years. And that's a significant change from a year ago when we had only 4% of the portfolio longer term. The objective is, and the strategy in this market is to have a little over 50% maturing beyond two years. So as we have maturities and funds available from securities being called, we will be looking to, continue to extend the portfolio to lock in the interest rates for the city. Now, the investment policy requires us to judge, to show the performance of the investment portfolio on a yield basis relative to the 12-month average of Star Ohio. Star Ohio is an investment pool that is run by the State Treasurer's Office. That's like a money market fund that's only available to public entities. And so we can see here clearly as the green line, which is the city's investment yield, as that has slowly, had slowly increased and more recently did start to pick up. Because short-term interest rates had increased so rapidly, we were in an environment where the yield on the investment portfolio fell behind Star Ohio. And that's very typical in this environment where a money market fund like Star Ohio has a weighted average maturity of 60 days. So meaning that it's constantly reinvesting its funds. So as interest rates rise, it was able to reinvest very quickly. Of course, on the downside now, as we are seeing interest rates fall on the short end, we're now also seeing Star Ohio very quickly, the yield on that also drop as well. And as a matter of fact, as of yesterday, it was below 2%. So it has dropped very quickly. So that being said, clearly, when we look at this over the long term, which is how we want to view an investment portfolio, we can see that we've exceeded this average Star Ohio yield by just under 50 basis points. And then lastly, we included in here a listing of the city's, city's investment securities. So as we can see, each of these securities are in compliance with Ohio law as well as in compliance with the city's investment portfolio, investment policy. All securities are held by the third-party custodian, which is PNC. And that is a GFOA best practice to have that in place. But certainly, when we look in, in terms of, you know, the, the current portfolio, as we can see, you know, we do have a fair amount of securities maturing within a year. And certainly, as we're looking to reinvest those monies, arguably, it will be at lower rates than what they were previously invested in. So any questions there?
Questions?
Would you think the goal would be to have five pretty even columns here?
The goal would be to have more of what we would call a barbell. So to continue to have, with a flat yield curve, having funds available maturing within about a year, offset by almost, I would say, not quite an equal amount maturing longer term. So this would be our bifurcation of having about 50% maturing less than two years and 50% maturing beyond two years. And more exactly, along the lines of about 30% maturing in that five-year area. So that would give us a modified barbell effect.
Okay.
Okay. Good question.
What's the future outlook beyond, you know, this year? What's...
Well, certainly, you know, as we look at what the Fed has already done, it has given us hope and given the market hope that at least the Fed did react to the headwinds that are, the US economy is facing. And they did lower that overnight rate by 75 basis points. And what that has done is, is that has kind of removed from the marketplace the fear that the US economy is headed into a recession. Because clearly, earlier this year, there was much stronger, stronger indications, feeling that the US economy would be looking at a recession. So that risk has been diminished. So certainly, though, we do look for short-term interest rates to continue to fall. We look for what we call continued volatility in interest rates, particularly as it revolves around the trade disputes and of course, with the political environment that we're currently in, is certainly having an impact on the market as well. But clearly, right, it's, we don't think we're, we are, we will be returning to rising interest rates at this point.
Well, I mean, we're, we're heading into an election season for presidential elections. So is that going to, you, you suspect that there's going to be some volatility because of that?
I think the volatility now, as it relates to the election season, is more focused on the, the observation that Congress seems to be more focused on attacking the current administration through investigations, continuing investigations and the like, as opposed to enacting legislation that may be positive. So certainly, you know, as we look at some of the changes that have occurred politically, or I would say fiscal, from a fiscal standpoint, it's been more by executive order as opposed to congressional action. So that certainly has created some angst, I would say, in the marketplace and certainly would like to see us get past that and have the focus be on moving the country forward.
Yeah, okay.
Do you feel that if Brexit goes through, I know they pushed it back, you'll start to see some positive interest rates in Europe? What, what effect will that have in Europe? And then how will that affect the US?
I think Brexit, Brexit is just creating uncertainty because we don't know really when it will be finalized and really what the fallout will be. You know, it's, it's, I equate, it's very similar to when we look at the trade disputes. We've not had trade disputes of this nature since going back to, you know, pre-depression days. So there's really, it's really difficult for economists and the like to forecast what will be the outcome because we've not lived through it before. And I think a lot, that can be correlated with Brexit. You know, we've not gone through, you know, a country leaving European Union. So folks can speculate insofar as what it can mean. But we won't know for sure until it does occur. But insofar as will it help the, the European countries, certainly it might to the extent of, as they have established financial centers there because currently London, of course, is kind of the European financial center. And if they leave the European Union, there would have to arguably be financial center established in another country. But a lot of what is pooling down Europe is primarily the export markets. Europe, European countries, many of them, particularly Germany, are very dependent on exports. And so as global growth has slowed, demand for, whether it's the German automobiles or German manufacturing, you know, as that has slowed, that has been the big, I would say, has put the most pressure down on, on Europe. And of course, you know, they have an aging population as well. So certainly, they're not inclined, from a consumer standpoint, to be spending at the same rate that the US consumer does. So, short answer to your question, really.
Well, I, I agree that there's two really big unknowns.
Yes.
And the trade dispute is one and Brexit is the other one.
Yes.
And the sooner those get resolved,
Yes.
the better it is because there are two big unknowns that just get checked off. And until they do,
Right.
you're going to see increased volatility.
Yep.
Especially during an election year.
Yes.
The other question, I, you said that you think the Fed's going to cut rates one more time in 2020.
Yes.
There have been passed, well, when Alan Greenspan was the chair, he didn't cut during '99 or 2000. He should have and he didn't.
Right.
Because he said, I don't want to interfere with the, with the election. And as soon as the election was done, he started raising rates. And so you don't feel that's what, that's what Powell's going to do? He's going to do what he thinks is the best right now and...
Yeah, I think Powell is, is really having to prove his independence and prove it through actions. Because of course, as we know, the administration has been very vocal as it relates to what they, they believe he should be doing.
Right.
So consequently, I think there's that countering force of whereby, you know, he is really keeping the committee focused on being apolitical and focusing truly on the data and their mandates. So as long as they, they keep him in office.
I always find it interesting because when President Clinton was president and it was time to reappoint Alan Greenspan, they always did a big ceremony.
Yes.
And when it was President Bush's time, it was always a quiet, step in, five minutes, be gone, kind of thing was always kind of quietly done.
Mm-hmm.
And I always kind of wondered that was because of the inaction of the Fed during, I guess, 2000, I guess.
That's a good question. I'll have to research that one.
Always surmise that, I guess.
Yes, exactly. Maybe someone's done a study. All right, any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you very much. I truly appreciate it.
Appreciate your time. Thank you. We will move now to item G, reports from council committees. Number one, Finance and Budget Committee, met on Monday, October 28, 2019. Mr. Mayor, do you have a report?
Yes, we review the, we review the 2020 proposal. Yes, we review the 2020 proposed draft revenue estimates and also the income tax projection for 2020. We looked at the 2020 debt payments and also discussed the capital items for the 400 Fund. Also want to thank Kelly for her really nice way of presenting all the information at the Finance and Budget Meeting.
Thank you. Safety and Human Resource Committee, scheduled for October 28, was canceled due to lack of agenda items, and Technology Committee did not meet tonight due to lack, excuse me, of agenda items. We'll move on to Letter I, Introduction of New Ordinances and Resolutions. Ordinance number 075-19, An Ordinance Approving the Execution of the Efficiency Smart Schedule with American Municipal Power incorporating, incorporated, and declaring an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Council President Protam. As we've had a presentation at the Electric Committee and Board of Public Affairs and had a discussion at the last council meeting, the Efficiency Smart representatives were here and provided that presentation to explain the new version of their program. Just as a reference, the contract for, with Efficiency Smart expires at the end of this year, but they've, they've come out with a new program that is more of a, has more of a demand focus, which is, not only provides the incentive for businesses and residents, but focuses on the demand charge, which helps out with overall rates and keeping rates down. So it's a, it's a great job retention tool and actually a good economic development, you know, job creation tool also. It's, they're gonna have a more robust residential program also, so they have a new online program that's gonna be, that's gonna be coming out in 2020, and it's gonna be user, a lot more user-friendly. I mean, they have a residential program now, but I think this, these new features are gonna make it a lot easier for people to use and understand. And like I said before, it's a more of a demand focus, helps reduce our costs while keeping the cost to the individuals or the businesses while helping the rates out. So other than that, you know, we have the draft agreement, items that were in the packet, and happy to answer any questions.
Questions, comments, comments? Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, that went through first reading. Ordinance number 076-19, An Ordinance Amending Charter 955.10 of the Codified Code of Ordinances of the City of Napoleon, Ohio, Regarding the Current Shelter House Community Center Rental Rates. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. Director Tony Cotter met with the Parks and Rec Board last week, went over the additional changes that were recommended from the committee and then on to council. And originally, it was a 10% across-the-board rate adjustment for all shelter house rentals, and the additional funds were gonna go into a maintenance fund for all the facilities. We rounded the rates to the nearest $5 mark, just to make it more convenient for the, for the residents that use it. So in your, in your packet, you'd see most of them went up $5, and some of the larger ones went up to $10. So that covers it. The board voted unanimously to approve of this. Take any questions?
Question, sir?
First read.
Comments?
Just a note that the, all the money that's, the increase is going to the maintenance fund that the...
Yeah, that was, that's what was voted on, that was desired last time, so we just have to have a mechanism in place to track it.
Just a matter of creating a different, a separate fund, is that right?
Yes, we'll work with the state to see what the title has to be and what numbering has, so we can track it.
Okay. So 100% of the increase will go to the end of that fund, is that, that's correct?
Correct. Okay. Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 077-19, A Resolution Approving the Provisions of a Certain Collective Bargaining Agreement Between the City of Napoleon, Ohio and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees. The AFL-CIO Local 3859, For the Term Commencing From December 1, 2019 Through November 30, 2022, Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Same and Declaring an Emergency. Motion?
So moved.
I'll second that.
And second, Mr. City Manager?
Thank you. In this, we went through the collective bargaining process with the AFSMI union, and we went through the interest-based bargaining process. It worked out well. Took a, took several meetings for us to get through this, but we got through a lot. And we've had a lot of language clarifications, and I think the big, the big thing was trying to balance things out. So it's, it's, the contract and policies are spread out evenly and fairly amongst all bargaining unit members. With AFSMI, it's much more difficult, because you have so many, you have such a variety of employees that are part of AFSMI with, you know, parks and the treatment plants, operations, and electric mostly. And a lot of language clarifications regarding overtime, vacation carryover, light duty and restricted duties. But, and then, you know, as for the increases, the wages were, are set at 2.25% each year for three years during the term of the agreement. So also, there was an increase for outerwear allowance. Right now, the outerwear allowance, in a lot of cases, doesn't even cover their boots that are required for them to do their jobs, so we increased that, had a little more. What's on the screen is comparisons of wages and AFSMI contracts from around the state, just as a reference point on what other communities have approved in 20, either 2018 or 2019. And I'll take any questions.
Questions, comments?
No, going over the contract, and trust me, I negotiated probably five of these The unions got a good deal going. Just want to say that. They got a good deal going.
Is this renegotiated every three years? Every three years.
Okay. Due to the need for this to take effect at the date, suspension has been requested. Is there a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll on suspension.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, call the roll on the resolution.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, that has passed on first reading. Going to second readings, Ordinance number 072-19, An Ordinance Amending the City Income Tax Code, Section 194-03. Definition, To Adopt Sections 718.01YY and 718.01ZZ of the Ohio Revised Code and Declaring it an emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Kelly?
Thank you. This is regarding the supplemental executive retirement plan exemptions from House Bill 166. It added two definitions, one for pension and one for the retirement benefit plan, and it's effective on or after January 1st of 2020.
Discussion? Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay. Resolution number 073-19, A Resolution Approving a $50 Surcharge to the City of Napoleon, Ohio Health Insurance Premium. Excuse me, Amending Resolution Number 012-18 and Declaring an Emergency. Motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay, is that you, Kelly?
Joel.
Joel?
Thank you. This is the resolution, as we discussed it in the past, regarding the acceptance of the health, new healthcare plan, plus continuing the $50 surcharge for employees that don't get the wellness check as part of the wellness program. So we're requesting suspension due to the open enrollment starting, and that's due by the end of the month.
Discussion, questions? Okay, do you have a motion for suspension?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll on suspension.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, that is passed under suspension. There are no third reads tonight. We'll move on to Item L, Good of the City. L1, Discussion, Action, Award of Park Street Improvements, Phase 3, LTPC, Project Number 17C, Partial Project. Joel?
Thank you, Council President Protam. We received bids, October 22nd, Vernon Nagles was the low bidder at $1.166 million, and after reviewing bids, the recommendation is to award the contract to Vernon Nagle. And the schedule of this is likely to start in the winter time, where they'll do some of the underground work, whatever they can do, weather-dependent, and then, you know, finish up in the spring, maybe early summer.
That's not gonna create any potential hazards in the winter with, like, snow removal or anything of that nature?
They can, it's happened in the, it's happened in the past, so they can work around it.
Any other comments, questions? You need a motion?
Yes.
So moved.
Is this the, no, it's just a motion, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
One of you two?
Take the senior one.
Mrs. Sinclair? Excuse me. Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, we have that. Item 2, Discussion of Action, Approval of Specifications for Chemicals for the Water Treatment Plant and the Waste Water Treatment Plant for Physical Year 2020. Joel?
Thank you. This is the annual contract for the chemical bids for water plant and waste water plant. Nothing unusual, or business as usual.
And you need a motion, I'm assuming?
Correct.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay. Item 3, it's already been taken care of. Item 4, Discussion, Action Regarding Ohio Revised Code, Section 9.68 and the Napoleon Codified Section Number 549-08, 549-09, 505-11, and 505-15. Mr. Law Director?
Thank you, Council President Protam. The state legislature has decided to modify Ohio Revised Code 9.68, which is the statutory version of the constitutional right to bear arms. It does a number of things, as previously drafted, to protect a citizen's right to, and they use a number of verbs here that I won't read all of them, but to possess and transfer and transport firearms. They changed it in a way that makes it necessary that the city repeal a number of ordinances, whether or not you're for gun rights, whatever your opinion is on this. The effect of this statutory change is going to be that municipalities will have to make a decision either to keep in place a number of ordinances that they have to prohibit the discharge of firearms, to prohibit hunting, and to prohibit various other activities within city limits. As it, as it reads now, and in my opinion, we will have to repeal a number of ordinances that prohibit certain activity with regard to firearms in the city. I know a number of municipalities will be doing something different. They may be deciding to keep those ordinances on the books and fight out the eventual lawsuit that will show up, because one of the other changes here enacted gives a person, group, entity, any grouping adversely affected by an ordinance or rule of a political subdivision such as a city, a private cause of action to simply state that there is an ordinance on the books in this municipality and that I have been affected in some way. And so that would be, in my opinion, a lawsuit that would be coming at some point. Given my, my understanding of the new draft, given the potential for lawsuits, my recommendation that we do repeal sections of our ordinances that would run afoul of this new statutory language, and I would ask for legislation to be directed so that I draft that and bring it to the next meeting.
Okay. First of all, comments, questions?
Do you know how many ordinance?
I think, as drafted so far, I think it's a good five or six. So we are going to check, this was after the fourth or fifth check to run through, because there are a number of ordinances drafted, and there's the potential to miss something. But I've checked it a few times, and my staff has checked it a few times, and we'll check it one more time before we present this to City Council. In order to, number one, comply with state law, but number two, also to avoid the oncoming onslaught of, I'm sorry, litigation that's coming to the municipalities, in my opinion, that keep their ordinances on the books.
Any other comments, questions? Jason, you look like you...
No, no, I'm good, thank you.
You're scratching your head, I wasn't sure.
No, I'm good, thank you very much.
You know, the council I've worked for, look at, nonverbal.
I appreciate it. I appreciate it.
Okay. So can I have a motion to draft legislation for such purpose?
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay. Item 5, Discussion of Action, Amending the Allocation of Funds for 2020. And Kelly?
Thank you. This is regarding the income tax split between the general fund and capital, and the information, we'll have more information available after the eighth and ninth budget meeting, to give to Billy to be able to draft the legislation.
So do we direct him to draft legislation at this time, or?
Yes, so it's available for the 18th meeting.
Okay. Motion to, for that?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.
Are you anticipating it remaining as it currently stands?
There might be a slight adjustment presented to council during the eighth and ninth.
Well, I guess I can, I'll just give everybody a prelude. Right now, we, we're looking at taking the funds that were set aside for the pool fund and moving that back into the capital, and that difference, which is $97,000, widening the split to-
6535.
6535 would be, would be that difference.
But the capital wouldn't lose any money because they would have gotten the $97,000 from the pool back, from the 401 fund.
So the money that was set aside in the 401 fund goes back into capital for projects, and then what we're trying to do, and this is, this is my opinion, and I think Kelly agrees, is that the priority right now is, is building back up the general fund operating balance, and that's the reason. And the, and the, and the thought process behind it, why the 70, why the $97,000, because it's coming back from the Parks and Rec 401 fund, back into capital for projects. And with the income tax refund and the way our income tax projections have been in the past three years, my opinion is that we, there's a need to build back up the general fund reserve balance.
Looking forward to Friday already.
Any other questions? Okay, do I have a mo, did I have a motion already on that?
You do.
Okay, Roxanne, would you call the roll?
Jeff C.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay. Item number seven, discussion of action, expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 in and for the year 2020. Kelly?
You skipped number six.
Oh, I skipped one?
Yeah, you did.
Number six.
Oh, that's one happens. Backing up, the discussion of actions on expenditures of exempting bids for the year 2020. Motion? I have to have a motion, right, to move on?
Yeah.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Now, Kelly?
Thank you. This is passed every year, this is just in preparation for Billy to be able to draft the legislation for November 18th. This is for companies that have services, so they don't have to bid it, and we're updating the list now, so we'll have it ready after the budget meeting on the eighth and ninth one.
Any other discussion there? Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, now I will go to the one I tried to go to earlier. Number seven, a discussion of action, expenditure of funds in excess of $25,000 in and for the year 2020. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Okay, we have that. Kelly?
Thank you. This is, again, as every year, it's for departments that are going out for bid for items over $25,000. Again, we'll have the list updated and ready for Billy to do the legislation for the 18th.
Questions? Okay, so again, requesting the law director to draft legislation. Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Item eight, discussion of action, phase one, covers for the, this sounds like a wastewater project here, covers and sledge removal improvement projects. Motion, phase one of that.
So moved. Second.
Would that be you, sir?
That would be Joel.
Oh, okay.
This was a project we've been talking about, and we did bid this out, but it wasn't part of the master bid ordinance, so we need legislation, so requesting council to direct the law director to draft legislation.
Okay.
Bids came back at $713,000 for the digester cleaning.
Were they taking the cover off? Or are they doing it?
Well, um-
No?
Not, those aren't-
It was, it was, it was bid as an option that they could take it off, but there's not, there's not going to be a need to.
I was going to say, that's going to be a big crane.
Yep.
Okay.
And that's probably why.
Okay, again, for the digester cover, digester covers and sledge removal, this is to draft, for the law director to draft legislation. Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, item eight, discussion, I mean nine, discussion of action, Napoleon Aquatic Center Pool Bath House Demolition Project. Motion?
So moved. Second.
Joel?
Thank you. Again, this was not part of the master bid ordinance since the levy passed this year, so requesting that council direct the law director to draft legislation for this, to bid this project.
Comments, questions? Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
I know you voted on it already, also a question.
Yep.
So the, so the demolition is not part of the whole project, which is two phases then, demolition is phase one and build is phase two?
Correct.
It's not one project?
Still part of the pool fund.
I understand.
Yep.
Okay.
And as a side note, the original estimate was $250,000 for the demolition. That includes all the underground, the grading, and everything else to make sure it doesn't hold water. Right now, we're probably looking at an engineer's estimate of $220,000, so it's about $30,000 less than what was originally estimated.
Just a question, the concrete's being pulled out of there?
Yeah. Oh, yeah. It's all got to come out. It's all, it all has rebar in it.
Good.
So, that's why the, the expense of-
I just don't want us to bury it like we did the old one.
No, can't do it, because we got to build a, a new pool there, so the biggest cost of that is going to be trucking.
Are we getting the concrete?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take the concrete to the-
We're going to grind it and use it for stone products?
More than likely, that's-
Right.
Unless, unless the contractors have a better mousetrap, it's cheaper, then that's likely what'll happen.
Okay. Item number 10, discussion of action, appointment of an OMEA delegate, and I believe this is to replace former Councilman Schaefer?
Yes, yes, so just, and it, for a decision to be made, be better sooner than later, but I don't think it's urgent to have somebody appointed right now if you want some time to think about it, but since Travis left, he was the appointed OMEA delegate mayor, you were his backup, so-
Who are the, most of the communities have their, their mayors, the delegate, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah. And then, you know, like, Painesville doesn't have a mayor, they have a council president that acts, that acts as that role.
Right.
But most of them are mayors.
Yeah.
Legislation will be necessary on that one, so, yep.
Okay, do we, so you're saying now, or should we hold on to this?
Does anybody else, is anybody else interested? Is Joe?
Joe, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, we, we have, but we're, I mean, council makers decision.
Okay. Okay. Do you, do you want to, I don't know if you want to add it to the agenda for Friday or Saturday, or?
Joe, you probably won't be back this, this week, will you?
I'm not sure, I may be back, I'll be home, hopefully tomorrow, but maybe I'll come in to, to a meeting next week.
Okay, can we table this to, does it have to be to a specific meeting, or to?
There's nothing coming up, other than the, I think they have their December meeting as they, you know, and then they have a holiday celebration too, so.
Would we be okay?
Early, early December.
But you would still have to draft legislation, right?
At some point, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, but with a calendar fall, you can do it, because the first meeting in December is September 2nd. So if you want- So you can decide to be 18th and still have it come, emergency with all that kind of stuff on the 2nd, and still have that person in the holiday meeting if needed.
Okay. Well, let's table this to the, for the next regular council meeting. Is that okay with everybody? Do I need a motion to table this?
Yes.
Can I have a motion? Okay.
Second.
Okay, Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay, thank you folks for your assistance there. And number 11, discussion of action to accept another donation for the K9 unit?
Lumberyard Winery, $50.
Okay.
That brings the grand total, what's remaining, I think, is the, what, 4,400?
Roughly, yes.
4,600, maybe.
Do we need a motion for that?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, can I have a motion?
Move to accept.
Oh, Ken?
I'll second it.
Ken and Laurie, I think, Roxanne. Call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Laurie.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff M.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Yes.
Okay. We will go around the table, starting with Kelly.
Thank you. I just want to welcome you to council, and we're just working on the budget for the budget meetings on the 18th, so.
You got some shoes to fill there, Ross, so we'll help you along.
Thank you.
Glad you're here. And I want to say, the city manager has got some action on the tree issue on the corner of Haley and Strong Street, it's going to be trimmed, just for the rest of you guys to know. And that's it.
Laurie?
Welcome back.
Oh, yes.
And welcome to you, Ross.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's it for me.
That's all? Okay. And, yeah, Jeff, we're glad you're going to stay with us for a few more years here.
Sure.
So, glad you're back, and John, or, one of you prefer, John or Ross?
Ross.
Ross, we are glad that you are here also, and it may be a little confusing for a little while, but eventually we all figure this out. Item number two, tomorrow is our local election day, true, there is no competition at the local level, but some of us are on the ballot, and there's also a school board here on a local basis, so just a reminder to go out and vote. And then, item three, we will have, of course, a special finance and budget and council meeting this Friday, and again, this Saturday morning, both starting at 8:00 a.m. And, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Welcome back. I'm glad you're here, because then I know that at least one person is reading the bills all the time. Sure. I know we all do, but not with the critical eye of you, so I'm glad you're here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Echo what Dan said about voting tomorrow, like, you're, you're right, there's no real issues at the same time. It's a privilege that people have fought for, so don't, don't be lazy tomorrow. Roxanne, you talked about, you need breakfast choices? What do you need? Menu stuff for, for Friday?
Yeah. Laurie and Jeff have both volunteered to bring that egg bake.
Cool.
Mrs. Comodall's baking some stuff for you.
Nice. Okay, I guess I have nothing else, then, thank you.
Jeff?
Welcome back, Jeff, glad to have you back. We missed you for the, what, three days, four days?
Officially, one second.
One second? And welcome to Ross, looking forward to working with you. That's all I have.
Mr. Hayes?
Yes. Welcome?
Sure.
Back, old timer? And new timer? I have nothing else.
Ross?
Uh, thank you all for the warm welcome, very excited, I'm sure, like Dan said, it's going to be like drinking from a fire hose for a little bit, but I'll do my best to keep up. Yeah, thank you all.
Okay. Billy?
Welcome to our newest council people, that's it.
Joel?
Welcome back, welcome. There are two Ross Durums, so I'm going to refer to you as the real Ross Durham.
I hear he's taller and better looking than I am.
Yeah. But there's also two Scott Durums, and there's also two Jessica Durums, so thanks for making things more confusing.
Yeah, my pleasure.
One item for the municipal properties committee, I didn't, I can't remember if we had referred out the housing fee moratorium to the, to that committee, because I believe that falls off at the end of this year, thinking that was, that ran out at the end of this year, I didn't know if you wanted to put that back on for discussion, or let it, let it fade, so that would be for next week.
Do you? Yes? No?
It's, in my opinion, it's pretty simple, it's just redo it for another year, or another two years, you know what I mean? So it depends.
Is there need to have a committee meeting?
I don't think there's, I don't think there's a need for a committee meeting for that issue. To me, we got to bring it back as a discussion action to bring the law director, bring that motion, that's where I'm at, but I'm at the chair, so.
I guess if you want to discuss it now, you could, since we're, you know, if you want to get three reads, you know, before the end of the year, you'd have to direct that legislation now, and then, not to put you on the spot, but-
You can pass it with Vern's-
You know, that way you get three reads before the end of the year, and then it can take effect if they, but, I mean, if it, if it runs out and then it starts up again at the beginning of the year, say, you know, January 7th it passes, then, you know, you lose six days, and-
What is there to discuss?
Uh, just whether, you know, whether you want to keep going with it or not, you know, the, the, originally, it was passed on the premise that we're trying to encourage more housing growth and more residential, just on the residential side, encourage more growth, so just as a, as a talking point, at, you know, talking with other builders, it's, they see it as a nice, nice little added piece for them to be able to, you know, turn a number on, on, you know, make it worth their while to, to build in Napoleon, and, and, you know, I think we're seeing a lot of housing growth in, right now, in the city. I think we talked about 113 housing units, starting last year and, and running for about and running for about a 24-month period. So got a lot under construction, a lot of it's done, and we're starting to see the effects, so it's a good sign.
So like Jason said, we would want to continue it, so there's no point in really-
Okay.
That's my opinion, since we're on the committee.
Okay.
So do you want to make a motion to have the Law Director draft legislation?
I'd like to ask you to do that, please, Billy.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
You got that? Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff Al.
Yes.
Ken.
Yes.
Ross.
Okay. Anything else, sir?
No.
Yes, do you have anything for me next week? Water, sewer, refuge?
Dave, we got anything? You got the sheets, the costs for the last cleanup? I didn't think we needed to have that as a standalone agenda item. If you're okay with those.
I am.
They're up from previous falls a little bit, but, I mean, that's been-
There was a lot of-
We're having less-
Materials.
Lot of materials, and we have less vacancies in Napoleon, too, so. More people living here, it seems like. So other than that, no.
So Roxanne, we'll cancel water sewer?
I'm assuming you're off, too?
I'm assuming. Am I?
I'll have to ask Roxanne what we have on the agenda for Municipal Properties.
The NORA review, don't we?
We do have the NORA review.
You're still on.
I mean, we wrote it in the rules. I guess, Billy, is there, you know, can we, if that's the only item, I don't know if you wanted to-
I don't know, should you follow the rules?
Yeah.
Yes, should you follow the rules?
Yeah, it's the last one. Yeah. Do you want to move the meeting up?
We can move it up, yes, please.
To 7:00 or 6:45?
6:45, how about?
Confusing.
We can get through electric pretty quick, I think.
Okay. With that in mind, we have a request from the city manager for an executive session for economic development. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roxanne, call the roll.
Jeff C.
Yes.
Lori.
Yes.
Dan.
Yes.
Jeff Al.
Yes.
Ken.